Thank you. Uh, roll call please.
Alderman Carroll, Alderman Stone, Alderman Truch, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Hunt, Alderman Genetti, Alderman Casselitis, Alderman Dempsey, Alderman Cassetti, Alderman Raden, Alderman Stewart, Alderman Henry, Alderman Blackwell, Alderman Delibro. Ten present, four absent.
I declare quorum. Mr. Vaccaro, you had your hand up, please.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to add late resolution number one to the agenda. I'd also like to make a motion to add Hammond Asset Construction versus Ansonia to executive session. And the third motion would be to add late communication number one, a letter from the Ansonia Public Schools Board of Education directed to our state senator George Logan.
This is directed by Mr. Casselitis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Vaccaro. Um, consideration of previous minutes, we have a whole bunch here. We have the amended minutes from 28th December. We have, uh, December 13th organizational, we have December 13th regular meeting, and November 15th amended. Do I hear a motion, please? Mr. Joshua.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amended minutes of November 15th and December 28th, and the organizational regular minutes of December 13th.
Uh, thank you, sir. Is there a second? By Mr. Casselitis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Uh, with the large crowd here, I'd like to ask everybody to keep their comments to just three minutes or so. Please to speak directly to the president board of aldermen. With that in mind, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Show of hands. Anybody in the public who wishes to speak? Ed, it's third call. Is there anybody from the -- hey, we have one. Thank you, Ed. Name and address for the public record, please.
Edward Jancy, 21 Castle Lane. This kind of discouraged way the board went with Warner Brothers, the way they voted on that on there. And another thing, up on Ford Street, the way cars are parked on both sides, instead of somebody worrying about dogs parking, they should consider how the cars are parked on both sides. Plow guys got a zigzag going down Ford Street. How the cars are parked on both sides on Ford Street.
Uh, thank you, Ed. I'm sure the police will take note of that. Four or fourth, uh?
Fourth.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, because cars are parked on both sides, and city trucks, they got a zigzag going between those cars that park. And one of the guys on the board here was worried about dogs parking, worried about cars that park on both sides over there.
Okay.
That's more important, worried about dogs parking.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone? Mr. Cassetti, you had your hand up. Uh, name and address for the public record, please.
Yes, Joe Cassetti, 72 Root Avenue, Ansonia. Uh, I'll keep it brief. Uh, I'm speaking in regard to the, uh, the commission of conservation in the city, Conservation Commission, and our close association with the Seymour Land Trust. Uh, as you might know, our, uh, open space has become part of the Seymour Land Trust, and we are, uh, we are presently looking to, uh, increase our membership to the Seymour Land Trust. It's thirty dollars a year for, uh, family membership. It includes, uh, uh, legion pool rights, the privileges to fish, swim, uh, privileges to hike, and there are other outdoor activities that, uh, that the Seymour Land Trust does, uh, does run throughout the, uh, throughout the year. Right now, um, on the agenda, they're gonna be draining legion pool, and they're going to be, uh, putting, uh, new fr- new fish in there, fresh fish, uh, so that they'll start the, uh, new year with some, with some good fish in there. Um, it's, uh, definitely a benefit, and, uh, they're also looking to, um, they're, they're also looking for some volunteers for, uh, they call it Founder's Day, which has to do with the founding of Seymour, but being part of the Seymour Land Trust. Uh, I want to put it out there for our present viewers and those that are listening, um, that, you know, they're looking for volunteers, and it is a worthwhile venture that will gain some notoriety for the Seymour Land Trust, and any monies that are, are made throughout that entire day will go to the Seymour Land Trust. So, uh, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Third call. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Public session is closed. Thank you all. Public official session. Mayor Cassetti, please.
Good evening, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to begin by thanking and honoring one of Ansonia's finest, Fire Marshal Ralph Tingley. Ended his almost seventeen years with the city of Ansonia when he retired on January 6th. Ray, as he's called, was a tireless and dedicated public servant. He will be missed. He has been a tremendous asset to the city. Let's please have a round of applause for Ralph Tingley. Thank you, Ralph. Derek Lundin is the interim fire marshal. I know he will do a fine, fine job having worked under Ray for many years. I also want to congratulate the newly appointed fire chief Edward Adamowski. Ed, we wish you the best and know you will do well. He will, he will take over for fire chief Scott Trembley, who was a pleasure to work with, professional, dedicated, and led our fire department by example. Thank you, Scott, for your outstanding leadership. I also want to congratulate First Assistant Chief Mike Eamon, Second Assistant Chief Daniel Mudry, Third Assistant Chief Alexander Horgenson, and Fourth Assistant Chief J. Michael Feiner. Congratulations. The city of Ansonia will be well-served under all your leaderships. We are moving, we are moving into another year, and we have a lot to be proud of. I want to thank my staff and this board for their support and commitment to all of our economic development activities. With, without your help, we would not be able to realize all the positive improvements we have made to our city. There is a buzz around the valley that Ansonia is on the move, especially our downtown. We have a lot going on in the upcoming year. Our ATP and Palmer buildings will be sold after decades of stagnation. These buildings have cost the city in maintenance and lost tax revenue. There are tenants waiting to move in and others inquiring for space, so there will be exciting for our downtown. We have two developers interested in Ansonia Copper and Brass, and we have toured the site. We have, we have a developer and a demolition company who is interested in the SHW building. I hope you have all had a chance to eat at Lulupatza. If you haven't had a chance, please go there and enjoy the fine dining atmosphere and excellent Italian cuisine. You could also try the Cassetti Sangwich, which is a real good treat. Our new Thai restaurant will hopefully be opening up within the next couple of weeks. Everything has been renovated, and they are ready to go. We have a small manufacturing company that is looking to relocate to Ansonia, and our target site is underway. We have made application to the Noggetuck Valley Cog for funding for assessment of the site on behalf of the developer. PetSmart has already committed, and the additional site pads will most likely be occupied by two new restaurants. Road Ready is just about completed, and Fitzpatrick continues to renovate their facility. Downtown looks alive again. I want to again thank my staff and this board for moving economic development forward. January also brings with it the beginning of budget season. Rich Bisher, Bob Just Gilke, and my consultant Tommy Thompson, as well as the finance department, is working with all our departments on their budgets, and we'll have a good idea of where we are very soon in terms of numbers. The finance committee will begin to set up its meetings. Our number one priority is the taxpayers of the city of Ansonia. I am adamant that they cannot support, that I cannot support any increase in their taxes. They have been burdened for so too long, far too long. I will continue to do everything in my power to put every resident of the city of Ansonia first. That is my duty and obligation as mayor. I know that I will have a full support of this board and will put the taxpayers first. Hopefully, the next week, we'll see the upcoming, the opening of our ice skating rink. I hope everyone will come out and enjoy the ice skating in the hot chocolate. Stay tuned for the opening. I hope everyone is enjoying the opportunity to get some exercise at the armory. It's important to have a recreational activity to keep everyone active and happy during the long winter months. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Are there any questions of the alderman for Mayor Cassetti? Mr. Henry, please, Mr. Mayor.
Just a comment. I had a few people, when I was going in and out of the post office, comments about the Christmas music coming from Main Street. It's a very nice touch, very charming, and they thought things were going well in Ansonia, and both these people were from Seymour. I'm looking forward to the ice skating rink being open, too.
We got more music. During the inauguration, we'll have patriotic music. During Memorial Day, we'll have patriotic music, and 4th of July.
Are there any other questions from the alderman for Mayor Cassetti? Any other questions from the mayor? They're hearing none. Alisa Corporation Council, Mr. Marini, please.
Mr. President, the board, uh, snow season in the city has officially begun. As we discussed at our last meeting, we want to make provisions to enforce our existing ordinances when it comes to the cleanup of snow and ice on sidewalks. This is a serious safety issue. This affects any resident that's walking on a sidewalk in a commercial district or in the neighborhoods. And again, as a reminder, the charter requires that sidewalks are shoveled within six hours, six hours after a snowstorm hits, or if it occurs, a snowstorm occurs at night, by noon the next day. The charter allows us, allows the city, to clean walkways, public walkways that are not shoveled in that time, and put a lien for the cost out to the owner of the property. And this is exactly what we've been doing in the wake of the last storm, assisted by Public Works and our alderman, Rich Casselitis, who's been taking a look at the wards in the commercial districts, and really finding a lot of properties, especially those centrally located with a lot of traffic, that are not clear of snow and ice. So Public Works has been doing a lot of cleanups, and we'll be sending out notices of, of potential liens to the property owners. Now, in connection with our discussion last month, we're gonna afford those owners an opportunity to appeal on the grounds of being elderly, sick, disabled. That way, we do have some compassion built into the system. If they were unable to do it, and they could establish that, obviously, we're not going to be charging them for the full amount, or perhaps any amount. But we had a lot of bank-owned properties where the owners, the banks clearly have the resources to do this in a timely fashion, and yet, two days after the storm, we had a full sidewalk, full of snow and ice in front of a property. We also have the old, you know, Farrell buildings, again, covered with snow and ice. No provisions have been made to clear passageway, and as a result, we have residents walking, being forced to go to the streets. So a lot of that, a lot of those properties, the snow and ice, has been cleared in, in the more walked districts, and we will be sending notices and giving their owners an ability to appeal if they fall to certain conditions. But this is all under our existing ordinance structure, and again, we're looking to expand this a bit, give our building department the ability to bring out, bring in outside contractors, and also enforce it through possibly an infraction system. We're also going to be now, now that we've done a couple of these homes, we're gonna be sending out a formal notice to the media to, to sort of get this out into the community that the city is doing this, and remind them about the rules of clearing the snow and ice at least six hours after the storm, and additionally getting notice to the bank-owned properties to do with the list. That way, we could directly inform them of the costs they're going to incur if they don't take responsibility and get their contractors out there. So I don't know if Rich has any more to add, but he's certainly been busy. He's helped us quite a bit, uh, putting together the list of these properties, especially when it comes to some of the wards where this is a big problem.
Public Works has done a very good job of cleaning sidewalks, and they're very efficient at it, and they're very polite. I want to thank Mike and his team for going out and doing that for us.
Good job, Mike. Good job.
Can I, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Henry, please.
So the lien is basically to reimburse the city for the services they performed. Is there a fine on top of that for candiding?
That's where the amendment of the charter, or, you know, of the ordinance has to come into play. Right now, there is no provision for levying a fine or infraction. There's simply a provision that allows the city to do the cleanup and to essentially bill the owner for the cost of the cleanup through the lien process. But we don't have the ability to issue a ticket, and that's something that I think we need to look at through the ordinance committee.
Uh, Mr. Delibro, please.
Uh, Mr. Marini, that, that implies to business as well as residential properties?
Exactly, exactly. And I think that's where a lot of the problems are. I mean, the bank-owned properties are a big problem, and it's really, it's, it's really an unforgivable problem, given that the bank-owned properties do have budgets to take care of the maintenance. The problem is they're not, their feet are not being held to the fire, they're not getting their crews out there, they're just ignoring it. I think we have to let them know that there, there is a penalty to this. They can do it more efficiently and more cost-effectively, they'll do it. But the commercial districts, that's really important, because you have traffic going to and from the restaurants, and you get these, these sidewalks, these public walkways in the heart of the downtown that are not cleared of snow and ice. And so that's a serious problem. It's a safety hazard, it also deters, uh, traffic from the businesses. Abandoned factories, too. That's a big problem around those abandoned factories, they were completely snowbanded. So now you have Public Works out there keeping an eye on them, and if, if a capacity issue arises, we can always bring in an outside contractor and have those bills paid by the city, but then put the cost on the property.
Any other questions from any other alderman? Mr. Jay, please.
There are a little lien, I don't know, Alderman, there's something.
We're gonna, we're allowing the ability of the property, of the property owner to appeal, and we're gonna include on the appeal form specifically, are you appealing because of age, you know, health, and we're gonna take those into really, you know, strong consideration. That way, we're not, I mean, obviously, you know, it's a safety hazard, it needs to be cleared one way or the other, or it's not a good idea to wait, but if there really is, and then there are a lot of health conditions out there, and a lot of seniors that physically can't do it. Now, they need to know about the, the rules, and possibly look into either volunteers or hiring contractors, but, and we're gonna allow them the ability to, to kind of take advantage and get a grace period here.
Okay. Any other questions from the alderman? None seen that? Okay. Sheila O'Malley, Economic Development, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Um, we did have contractors and engineers out to look at the armory, to look at the bricks, what we need to do to repoint, and also consult with our environmental engineer about some of the contamination. Um, so we're, we're gonna, we're gearing up for the work to be done on the repointing of the bricks for the armory. Um, that's, that's, that project, the Nature Center parking lot, we've encountered some ledge, um, and as you may expect, that's a costly proposition. So we're meeting with the, um, the contractors before they go any further to talk about ways to, um, to shave some of the costs off and to see how we can, uh, work that in with the project and, and what the total overall number's gonna be on anticipated ledge, but a lot of it. Um, but the parking lot was moving along pretty, pretty quickly. Um, so those are some of the older, um, bonding projects. We're also, you're gonna be talking about some of the newer ones with Jared Heon and Doc, I see, are out there, talking about the ambulance. So we're getting geared up to start on, uh, some of those projects as well. I was just, um, passing a note over to Rich because I needed his help, but I, when you look at, um, Farrell and Ansonia Copper and Brass, and some of our other sites, Farrell and Ansonia Copper and Brass occupy sixty, over sixty-two acres of land in this city, and that equates to about a tenth of a square mile. And when you're six square miles, that's a lot of space occupied by brownfields. So the target, and we're gonna ramp up, and we're gonna get, we did get some, uh, brownfields funding, we have been getting it in a consistent fashion, but we're really gonna put the pressure on, try to get federal and state funds. We really need help with assessment and remediation. So we're gonna, we're gonna, um, you know, make a, a full force effort towards that, trying to clean up some of these sites. Um, I think that's it for now. Lot going on, but the mayor touched on it quite a bit of it. Any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Stone.
Sheila.
Yes, sir.
Who's, uh, managing the job of the Nature Center?
Who's overseeing that project?
Yes, same thing.
Uh, BL Company.
The engineering group?
Yes.
Okay, so where did the ledge conflict come into play?
Uh, they, they did not, the contractor nor the engineer did not see the ledge, or did not.
No, no. Is it storm drainage? Is it under parking? Mayor, you're, you've got a lot of experience in this kind of work. You must have bought up.
It's for the storm drain. It's in order to get the storm drained, and they encountered ledge. And, you know, they probably could chip it, but we're gonna negotiate with them to see if we can get them down on that.
So it's not, it's not the parking lot itself?
Well, it's the outskirts of it.
Yeah, right.
But I'm just so.
Where the drainage gotta go.
Yeah, well, the drainage, you can't do much about it.
Right, you gotta, you gotta chip it.
The engineers, then.
You maybe change the elevation of the surface of the parking lot, but you can't.
Right, but it depends on where the element is.
The engineer feels like, you know, they can, we can work on the price, and it won't be, uh, it won't, won't be too much of a problem for us. So hopefully, we'll work that through.
I got another, another question.
All right.
Something else.
Okay.
Um, up at Fountain Lake, is that right?
Yes.
That's finished, right?
Correct.
Did we ever get a report of, uh, what that, what that job took? You know, did we meet the, uh, the original grant? Did we have to get any more money, or what? Because I, I know there was extra costs for engineering there.
Yep, and, uh.
Did we ever, because I, I'm very interested in that place up there, because I would like to know what we're gonna do with the, uh, property now that, uh, the brass, uh, Farrell's up here.
Are you talking about the additional?
Well, we, we, don't we, Mayor, don't we own three, seven, eight streets?
We got two side pads, we got two side pads, two twenty-eater side pads.
Yeah, I just.
You want to advertise them.
Well, I'll be at the next economic development meeting.
Yep, I can, I can.
I just, I'm prepping you, so.
Yep, I can update you on that as well, because we're, we're gonna have engineers take a look and do a, and do a feasibility study for what, what the cost will be to create those side pads, what we're gonna need, what the dollar amount is.
And I assume Farrell's must be very happy?
They're, they're thrilled, and actually.
They've come out really nice, yeah.
Yeah, they, they do want to do some sort of a celebration or, you know, grand opening, so to speak, so.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, Alderman Stone. Anyone else?
Um, if I may, Sheila, unless somebody else wanted to ask a question? No, no, okay. Uh, just for clarification, so Farrell is on one side pad up there?
Yes.
And there's three more, correct?
Potentially, potentially.
Okay. And the city of Ansonia owns those three side pads, is that correct?
We don't, we don't own them currently.
Oh. But there was a, where's John? Isn't there a tax situation there, or?
The situation is that the CINDO is basically allowing us to keep the revenue from the sale of those pads. So we have invested interest in the pads, but don't actually outright own them.
I, well, it's, uh, I, I'm sure there's a legal line there, I'm just, you know, if they owe us money, and, you know, those are our pads, the way I'd look at it.
No one owes us money.
No, no tax money.
I mean, if, if, basically, who's paying the taxes on those pads? Uh, the owner, basically, the owner right now, CINDO.
Okay, all right, I just needed that clarification.
CINDO would like the pads to sell, and so would we.
Yep.
And he's essentially agreed to allow us to keep any revenue generated from the pads.
Okay.
That's essentially what they.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Okay. Oh, yeah, Sheila.
Yes.
Back to the armory. Um, just a quick question. Uh, we had to ask state permission because it was state bonding, so have they approved our doing the repointing, or are they still sitting on the paperwork?
They still sitting on the paperwork. Representative Gentile said she believes that we're, we're gonna be good to go, so I'm, I'm hoping, I'm taking her at that.
Yeah, no, I, but it's sitting on somebody's desk up in Hartford.
It is.
That's what it is, yeah.
It is, actually.
All right, so thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rich, Zeke.
Mr. President, Board of Aldermen, we had a surprise inspection by OSHA. Called up, there was no specific, specific complaint, it was just a random check for all our buildings. So we, uh, we checked everything out, and they're gonna get us a, a report on everything. And hopefully, we'll have that all coming in next month, once they compile everything. Been sitting on interview boards for promotions, you know, Public Works. Uh, represented the city in the Noggetuck Valley Cog, a couple of Waterbury, uh, city of, city of Ansonia's website, taking the complaints, concerned, the issues, making contact with the citizens. Uh, the city hall walk-ins, that, same way, just directing their complaints, anything that they have going on. Uh, Eagle Scout project, Jason Edwards, uh, got approved, so we're working with him now for the Veterans Park, and hopefully, within the next few months, once the weather breaks, we can start getting stuff going over there. And then the, uh, street study survey, and for the DOT, they've done, most of the, uh, lights and stuff were fixed. We have a couple more, uh, issues down there, for, for the pedestrians and the sidewalks down there. Things are looking pretty good, things are, you're right, I'm.
Good stuff. Thank you, sir. Any questions of the alderman for Mr. Zeke? Pat?
So how's the, the online, uh, issue thing going on the new website?
Good, as issues come up, Joe keeps picking up a few things that are missing, so we're getting, uh, correcting, as we see them, we correct them. We send them over to the IT and the.
So people are using them?
Oh, yes.
Using it?
Every, you know, we've, initially, we're getting a, a few, um, emails from the mayor. It, it's been calming down, get a couple here and there, respond right back to them. People are very happy that they're, uh, they're getting their answers that they want. So that, I think it's a great system. It's, every, every complaint that comes in directs right to a, a certain department, and they get it taken care of.
I got a call from Jason Eagle Scout, he's gonna present to the American Legion in February.
Oh, nice.
After which, he'll probably ask for.
Well, he, he raised two hundred and fifty already, and, and we got loads, I got a connection out here for him, and I'm pretty sure that they're gonna take care of most of it, what they want to do. And, uh, on the 18th, we have a meeting with the mayor.
We're looking forward to it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richie Bisher, Tom Troller.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Aldermen. Um, we're working on the budget, as the mayor had alluded to. Uh, in your package tonight, uh, there is, for approval, a rescission of a fine item that we had in the current budget, the low SIP funds. Uh, December, the letter came out from OPM stating that to, basically, from the problems they had in 2004, 2005, that they've allocated more money in low SIP than they've approved in allowing to people to spend. So they are in essence, uh, rescinding our March 17 allocation of $200,000. Before we got to spend crazy, I'm asking to rescind both the revenue and the expense, and basically, that'll be in abeyance until such time as they refund the, uh, low SIP money for the entire state. So I'm not sure exactly, there's a lot of feedback coming through, and I've got some letters going into the OPM on questions on how that's all working, but at this point in time, anything that was approved up to December 22nd is gonna be funded. Anything after that, you can't even submit the projects at this point, so, uh, low SIP is shut down.
All right, that's, that's not part of the bull recommendations, it's a separate document you have.
No, that's part of that group, actually.
Oh, it is part of that, so it's part of one, two, three?
Part of the normal, yeah, funny. I went to vote with it, and they approved it, and it's here for your approval.
Right, exactly, so, I think Mr. Vaccaro's gonna cover that.
Okay. Also, as part of that, uh, year-end changes, their letter came out, believe we're gonna lose about $84,000 in educational money, uh, because of cuts that they're making. Uh, been talking with Frank Conley at the Board of Ed. It may be coming out of the Alliance, but I haven't gotten full, uh, clarification as to whether it's ECS revenue or Alliance District revenue, so we'll stay on top of that, and we will have to, uh, to monitor that piece of it also. Be working on the bans of the bonds, we have Riverside demolition, it's coming due in February, we've been banning this for about eight years. I was hoping to be able to finalize that, but, uh, looking at the buildings still up,[1757.96] I was hoping to be able to finalize that, but looking at the building still up, I'm not sure if they're going to be totally done by, by the first of February, so that we can close that project. We may have to run one more ban cycle on it. We'll pay some down and borrow some more, so that they can finish the project, and maybe then finalize it in April or maybe November, depending on how far I can go with it. So that's one portion of it. Also going to be discussed in borrowing some money for the current or the new bond issue. Will we be any some, some funds for that, so we have availability to start those projects up as we come through. Final thing is, the city has been discussing, and we've sent letters out through the city and with USI on modifying the methodology for paying of medical insurance for retirees. We're basically going to be converting them to an HSA, HRA plan, similar to what all the active employees are having. The hope with this is that they will, for those that are cost sharing, will save money, the city will save money, and it will put it more in line with the current method that we are using for all the other projects, so. Letters have gone out, we'll be doing meetings with them, and that's, some of it was effective one-one, some is going to be effective two-one. We'll be transitioning through that, I'm sure there'll be a couple of hiccups, but we'll handle those as they come through. So that is what I've been working on in the last month or so.
Thank you, sir. Were there any questions from the Aldermen for Mr. Bichera? I don't see anything. Just as you open a door for ECS funding?
Yes.
That has been a major concern, I'm sure, for the mayor and the Board of Aldermen for, you know, many years. And we are now, tonight, distributing this letter from the Ansonia Board of Education, which the Board of Aldermen already voted to endorse, and ECS funding is one of the issues that's covered in this letter along with special education. So, and I will say again that the city of Ansonia has been short-changed by the state of Connecticut for the last several years, and it's impacting our budget, as I'm sure you're intimately aware, so.
I believe our ECS funding has been fifteen million oh thirty-one for at least the last eight years.
Well, to my point, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay. Lieutenant, please, Police Department.
President Trump, Board of Aldermen, good evening. I have to help fight a cold, so I'm trying to get through this as quickly as possible. Let you know we had a retirement last week, he stopped working as of last week, but he running out some of his time, so it'll be done in about one and a half. That's Officer Coonan, he did twenty-eight years, I believe it is.
Wow.
So. We have two officers currently in the academy, one in Verity and one in Bridgeport. We also have a couple openings that we're still trying to fill. Winter parking is fully in swing, I know that there's been a play up on the northbound Fort Street, saw some guys go up there tonight, see if they can try to resolve that problem. But the, it seems to be working, with writing out less and less tickets each week, so that's hoping it's complying. In addition, over the last couple of months, in December, we had a couple of commercial burglaries. Dr. Greenberg's off at Valley, Long Lake, or in China Sea, broken into in December. The detective bureau has, the patrol division made arrests on all three of those cases now.
Good, good.
So, in addition, they made an arrest from an armed robbery that occurred over the summer at China Sea.
Wow.
They made arrests in that.
Thank you.
So it's been a very active month for them. If you have any questions, I can answer.
Any questions of the Aldermen for Lieutenant, please? Done? Okay, must be doing a good job.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, public official session, is there anybody I missed? Ansonia, Nature Center? Mr. DeLazio, please.
Good morning, Colonel.
Yes, sir.
A few things. Last two storms, we handled them pretty well, no breakdowns, no problems with trucks. We got a new truck coming in, it's a New Haven, we have a body and a follow-up, hopefully we'll have that next week, our entire unit.
Oh, New Haven body?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just there.
It's ours, it's ours, it's ours.
Oh, it's ours, okay.
Yeah, real nice truck, but our entire unit, our two basin dumps, we're totally ripped off, so we're just barely hanging out with the basin dump. Little basin dump does a fourth, a fifth, four, and a whole.
Well, you've got one of the bond issue, right?
Yes, because when we got plumbing, we got one more, we got a three D. Hopefully we can get that dump in here, get it ordered, and get it for next year. Takes a lot, just allowing it to be ordered. But, I'm going to take it out of Christmas barges throughout town, so we're about to take it out of Christmas barges, down to the tree, we'll be down tomorrow, city hall. I have the guy, we have Christmas trees every day, we've spent about four hundred trees so far, hopefully by the end of the month, take them with diamond, get rid of the trips, see if we can hustle up to the smoke on the Christmas tree, if we can this year. Ice skating rink is up, it's frozen, I walked across it tonight, so hopefully, if we agree with the company, we can be out there.
Anybody out there tonight?
Yeah, I'm saying, nice tonight.
Excellent.
Hopefully we can get people out there next week and space for all of them. Usually when it freezes, people like this, it'll be all right. And I'm working on my budget this month, and Richard has asked me for the last two weeks, I want to come up with a budget. I haven't seen that body yet.
Okay, any questions of the Aldermen for Mr. DeLazio? Patrick Henry, please.
Was it Christmas Eve you had guys out in the ploughs?
Yes.
Thank those guys, please. All right. I'm sorry to see that, but I'm glad they're out there.
All right, good. You might be off.
Uh, Mr. DeLibra.
If the gate at Live in Detroit is locked, can the kids still go down the gate by the field house or the other gates, go up there and skate at any time?
Anytime. I really not have a minute, I wouldn't stop.
No.
But you can, you can walk through. You keep the gate locked, they're going driving, they're starting to go on something that long. People walk in, park, park on the wall, walk up. It was awful, it was hard last night.
Did it ever mention that property on Cheryl Drive, the Brook with the stuff? Oh, sorry.
Uh, yes, break time.
Any other questions for Mr. DeLazio? Charlie Stowe, please.
Mike, I've been thinking about you all day today. You and Jared. Hi, Jared. So, so there's a, we had a referendum, and in that referendum, I believe we passed the purchase of a pressure washer that will roll underneath these vehicles.
I bonded, we put body armor for it, but it works.
Right, well, we're, we need, so that's what I wanted to know. So it hasn't been purchased, but you guys have been riding around in salt and whatever that Mike's been drizzling all over the city streets. As I noticed, because I didn't slip or slide in one location. Excellent job, Mike.
Salt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I want that pressure washer, and I want you guys to start washing that underneath those vehicles, because I mean, I understand, because I work for people who plow in the salt, they use straight salt, they don't really use sand anymore, and it eats the hell out, and, and, especially that ambulance, those two ambulances, what are they, like two or three hundred thousand pieces?
Everything behind the wheels, everything behind the rear tires.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I know, I understand, you know, you may off and on, I don't know, I'll just ask you, do you put them on a lift a couple of times during the winter and wash them off?
Uh, no.
No, so you would be, you would be dependent on this device to clean those ambulances?
They have washed three times a week.
Yeah, but I, Jared, I'm not trying to cause trouble, I'm really just, I want to see that, that item purchased that was passed, because you can't get underneath the way, you know, that whole idea that you, is you roll, it's on casters, and it rolls underneath, and you get that ninety pounds per square inch pressure wash, and you, and you can even use certain chemicals, you know, I shouldn't say chemicals, soaps, but biodegradable soaps, if I put it correctly, to say it right. So, so you can use those soaps, and it'll help clean everything off. And I just, we're going to purchase those, we've got these trucks that are lower to the ground, and I'd like you guys, next month, I'd like to hear that it's purchased, and that you can use, please, and use it diligently, because we're in the salt season. Thank you.
Our city, our city trucks, after every storm, dump the salt out. We lift our beds, every, every truck is clustered. Dump trucks a lot easier, because you can raise the beds up, get them to chassis and all, but for your, your ambulance and our public tires, that would work, but our trucks are washed every storm.
But you don't, you don't have a lift you pick them up with?
No.
No, but I'm saying, that's weak. Mayor, can you help me out with this?
I hear you, Charlie.
Can you help this out with me, man?
Yeah, no, you get it on a lift, and you spray underneath it.
Yeah, right.
But that's why I really want that wash bay down at Public Works. I want to put up a wash bay, a three-sided building, back the truck in there, and it just goes underneath it and sprays it off. That, eventually, I want to get that, especially for Public Works.
Yeah, well, we were.
You know, for arms, yeah, you need that machine.
We were, we were, no pun intended, but we are under the gun for police stations, so we had to make our budget kind of tight, isn't that right?
Sure. We're under the gun. But, but, I'm, we're going to, we're going to work together to make, because I'm just, the stuff, you know, these vehicles are very expensive, and we have an obligation to keep them.
The arms that we deal with, they're our risk.
I know, Mike, you guys, you guys do a good job. I mean, that'll be helpful, you know? Thank you, that, thanks.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Stowe. Are there any questions for Mr. DeLazio? Just a quick question for Jared. Jared, how are you washing these ambulances? How are you?
How we wash them now, in our bay, we have a floor drain, we have a water separator.
Okay, that's good.
So if we're not previously able to, or maybe you sand all the time, lock it, but now that it's pretty much salt, we wash them in the bay, and then we squeeze the floors back to the drain, it's cross drain.
Okay.
And then, once twice a week, it's like that.
All right, that's all good stuff. You know, and like when I'm washing my own pickup truck, and, you know, same situation, it's not as nice as your ambulances, of course, but even so, when you're down there by the wheel wells, bend a knee, and I like to get up under these, those wheel wells there, shoot the back axle, the frame stuff, you guys are doing that, right?
And we actually have very good water pressure, we have water hose, so we really, so, and we wash two of them, they dry, we put the other two ambulances off, and then once they're dry, we do the other two.
Okay, yeah.
We don't want to send it out freely.
No, because, I mean, the city's making a very large investment. I mean, we've got another action item tonight that we've got to vote on, you know, for that bonded ambulance at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in XYZ change, so it's, you know, a good chunk of money, so we just want to protect our assets, as you might want to say.
I think we all do.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate your help. Okay, unless I missed somebody, committee reports, Mr. McCarroll, you have the, please?
Yes, Finance Committee, moved to pay all bills, if I can be accurate and correct.
Okay, is, is that a motion, sir?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Castelitis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Public Works, Mr. DeLazio was nice enough to inform us already, thank you, sir. Arms Committee, Jared, you, or, yes, you're the only one left standing, so if you could, please.
Commissioner McCarroll was there last night, but I'll be happy to report.
Okay. He already delegated to you, so I was told to ask you.
We had our commission meeting last night, first one of the year, we elected one of our Blackwell team here as our chairman, and Mr. Gray, and all the women here, as our vice chairman, and Joe Linger, we mean, as our secretary, which we had talked about a number of years. In December, we went on two hundred and eighty-one calls, we had twenty-two mutual aid derby, and that was up, because they only have two ambulances, and one of theirs had a fifteen engine rev done. Twenty-second call they had, we covered for them. We went five times to Seymour, we went to Sheldon, we passed two second calls on the overnight, three third calls, and one fourth call. And a lot of that is due to Griffin still being out of diversion constantly, they don't have diversion the last two days straight, and their diversion to Waterbury, Bridgeport, we're not able to do it constantly. So our cars are out of town, more than, you know, it takes longer to run, we've run off to Griffin, and the call, we're going to do that call, you know, stacked right on it. When they were going into Navy at eight o'clock in the morning, it's about forty-five minute transport time down there, that time to go through Yale, curfew patient over, and come back, you know, you almost had an hour and a half, two hours, which is very long. So some of those, because we're already covering other calls, no first call passed. That's pretty much it, that. We have communications in front of you tonight for capital approval plan, I'll explain them when they come up, but we're looking for your support. We were able to negotiate some pretty significant discounts that we're able to get extended, so we're looking for support with that. If you have to answer any questions with that.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. There any questions of the Aldermen for Jared, please? Well, pretty quiet. Thank you, sir, appreciate your information. Okay. I see in the audience, we have Mr. Nunzio Parente. Could you please inform us as to what's going on at WPCA? Would you like the podium, sir?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Close the job.
Okay.
So Nunzio Parente, on Central Street. So the last time I was here, I told you that we had salt opinion, we respected backups. In your file, in your package, we should have a copy of that opinion rendered by Rafa Colina from Hartford. That said, I don't think that's changed our opinion, hasn't changed my opinion with respect to cooperating with Public Works. Last week, we met with Public Works and the carriers for the insurance for the city of Ansonia, and we're trying to hammer out a best practices manual to respond to the backups. And internally, the WPCA is discussing setting up a fund to address some of the.
Popouts, plead outs?
No, 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 no.
Charlie? Come on, you were there, Charlie.
Not sure where he's going yet.
Yeah, he's not sure where I'm going. When your car gets hit, oh, the deductibles.
Yes, deductibles, yes.
So the deductibles. The deductibles.
It's your fault, Charlie.
So there is a high spirit of cooperation, and it looks like we're on the road to a very prosperous resolution.
So I'm getting from your inference that the situation has been resolved, sir?
I think pretty much it's been resolved, we're just doing the housekeeping right now.
Okay, all right. All right, so was there anything else you wanted to inform us on, or?
The only thing I could tell you is, recently, we've had EarthCore Energy and UI down at the plant, we have changed all our lights to the new LED lights, we changed the motors from on/off to variable driven, to respond to whatever they need to respond to with respect to being turned on and off, and the approximate savings is supposed to be around thirty-eight hundred dollars a month. So with that or without it, I can tell you that come June or July first, we're looking at another reduction in the fees for services. We have also checked almost every restaurant and facility in Ansonia with respect to Five, which is the grease.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We do have a couple to go, but we're almost complete at that low price.
Okay, well, I'm sure the city appreciates your efforts, especially with your sharp pencil, and I've discussed that with you before, and I know you go through everything line by line and item by item, so we do appreciate your sharp pencil, and thank you very much, sir.
No, that's a problem, as long as there's a pencil sharpener, there's a pencil too sharp.
Any questions for Mr. Parente, please, from any of the Aldermen? Hearing none? Okay, you just knocked them out, Mr. Parente, thank you very much, sir. Okay. Fire Commission, Mr. Joe Giannetti, please.
Yes, MVA assistance, we had fifteen, CO investigation, six, smoke odor investigations, twelve, crash, two, vehicle fires, two, grass, two, structures, one, propane gas leaks, four, fuel spill, two, system false alarms, we have eight, mutual aid, we had one, electrical hazard, one, and service, good intent, we had two, fifty-eight flaws. May I add this?
Yes, sir, please.
For the last seventeen and a half years, or whatever, I was our commissioner, and it was just an honor to, this is my last report, it was an honor to serve the city of Ansonia, and I'd like to thank the mayor, John, Sheila, Richie, the Police Department, Arms, and my brother Alderman and sister Alderman, for what he did for Ansonia Fire Department. Department. Uh, it's, it's a small budget, but these guys put their lives on the line for every citizen in this, uh, city. And I'm, I was very proud to serve them for the last seventeen or so years. And, uh, I wish new commissioner luck. You know, they're good guys. Take care of them, please.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Stowe, please.
Thank you. Quick, whatever happened with the, uh, the old fire truck that we were hoping to sell?
I believe they're putting out the bid. Uh, I think they have a couple buyers.
They got an offer, they got an offer, $15,000, um, and I told Scott Tremblay, I said, "That's a lot better than selling it for a dollar like they've done in the past." So I told him, "Take the offer and let's go with it." So hopefully, uh, now I guess it's in the hands of Eddie Adamowski. So I'll be in touch with him about what's going on.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any other questions? No? Hearing none? Uh, Ordinance Committee, I understand there's no report tonight. Um, Housing Authority, our two liaisons, community members are not here. Uh, any other committees I might have overlooked? Any other committees I might have overlooked? Uh, Municipal Reports, uh, Mr. McCarroll, you have your hand up, please?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the three motions that were approved by vote.
Okay. Yeah, it's a motion. Is there a second, please? Mr. Janetti? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Controller Approvals, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve that, uh, that they were approved.
Um, seconded by Mr. Cast, oh, the other young guy, Mr. Cassetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And we also have a Land Use Department report.
Motion to approve that's written.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second on that by Mr. Cassetti? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Tax Collector Report, Mr. Castelitis, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report and request refunds in the amount of $1,673.04, it found to be correct.
Okay, is that a motion? Seconded by Mr. Janetti? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Joe. Accidents and Claims, Mr. Delibro, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to refer all accidents and claims to corporate counsel.
Thank you. And seconded by Mr. Castelitis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, Communications, we have, uh, three communications here. Communication number one from a, uh, Catherine Margansky regarding a property at number sixteen Franklin Street. Um, she had a letter about a situation. Unfortunately, there was a fire at that property and some interaction with our building department. Uh, Mr. Marini, do you, uh, have just some information for the group as to what may be instructions you're going to be giving to the building department, or?
Yep. So, I mean, this is already under the, um, under the care of the building department. We have a demolition of a property underway. We decided with health and safety violations. Luckily, the owner has stepped up to the plate and has taken responsibility for the demolition. They've already submitted a demolition plan, and I believe that there has been a big set. And so I have, my understanding is that this is a letter from one of the residents in the area. They're very eager to see the demolition, uh, begin, and that will be the case. So I think we have positive news to report for this resident, that it's being dealt with. And in fact, again, the owner of the property, now that there are situations with the city actually has to go out and do the demolition and then lean the property owner for the cost, but this is a situation where the property owner has stepped up to the plate and is, uh, has put a demolition plan forward and is moving forward to do the demolition out of their own mind.
Yeah, but I don't have to do it. You're looking at six figures. Wow, that's a lot of money.
That's always costly to do. And we've been in this situation before. We have demoed several buildings under our, um, our building code. And then that cost the city incurs is turned into a lien and recorded on the property. This will not be one of those situations. The property owner is working with the city, and, uh, it looks like we're going to have a good resolution.
Good. Impressive. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Marini, or any, um, in that, uh, communication number one for record? Any questions, any comments? Hearing none? Seeing none? Thank you. Uh, Communication number two, uh, basically what, uh, Mr. Jared Hean was referring to. Thank you, Jared. Um, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. McCarroll, please.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid.
Okay, is there a second by Mr. Delibro? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Also, looks like another, uh, Jared Hean, uh, action item. Uh, Jared, do you have something you want to?
Uh, the second one encompassed, uh, two other, um, areas in the referendum that we had. Uh, one is the remaining two of these devices, for example CPR devices. We have included one with each of the new ambulance bids, and we're trying to get these other two to go on the other two ambulances that we have, or even when we pass the same one. I provided a sole source letter, um, and, uh, also, uh, we are receiving an eighteen percent discount, so that we're proposing to buy all four at the same time, which will obviously, I believe, is thirty thousand dollars in savings by doing this collectively, rather than separating them. So, uh, we're asking for that. The second thing is, um, you may have seen on our 2013 ambulance, we got the power load on it. It's the device that brings the structure up things in the ambulance. Uh, we've also ordered those with the ambulances that, um, we went out to bid on. We're looking for one to put in our 2011 ambulance, uh, so all four ambulances will be equipped with that. Again, we were, uh, able to do a quantity discount. They normally go for $27,000 a piece plus, uh, installation. We were able to get it down to, uh, just over $21,000 a piece per unit. So we were, um, able to save almost $80,000, uh, by doing this that way as well. So, uh, we were able to get quite a good savings by doing this quantity wise. And the last part of that is the installation of it and, um, upgrading the suspension. We have a lot of problems with the suspension. The new suspension that we're proposing to put on is called a liquid spring suspension. It replaces the airbags that we have now. We've had nothing but problems with them. It just hold out. It frees the air that shoots out the bottom, has condensation in it, frees the handle from squat. We have problems like that all the time with springs. So we're trying to upgrade that at the same time that it frees the power load. So we were able to save on some installation costs with that.
No. Um, thank you very much for your good shopping, Mr. McCarroll.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid as described by Chief Hean.
I just wanted to pay him a compliment, that's all. I just thank you for your sharp pencil also, and thank you for saving the money. So Mr. McCarroll has a motion, seconded by, uh, Mr. Josh Stewart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that was Communication Three. We also have a late communication that Mr. McCarroll made mention of, uh, in our opening.
Can you make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve, to approve this, uh, letter. This, this is, uh, I just touched base on it a little bit. Uh, this letter is, uh, being sent from the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, uh, to, or George Logan, and Linda Gentile. And briefly, as I can be, I'll just discuss what, you know, the mayor said about our citizens before when he went and talked about how they can't afford to have their taxes raised, which is very true and is our objective, especially when the state and other government entities are supposed to be fulfilling their obligations and don't. And I'll just tou- touch on a few paragraphs here. "Although our state has a long history of delegating control of public education to local boards of education, it is the state that has the constitutional responsibility to ensure that all children have equal access to good quality public education. This has been upheld in several court cases, including Horton versus Meskels, nineteen seventy-seven, and more recently in 2016 with Superior Court Judge Thomas, uh, I'll have to do the best I can, McCauser, uh, decision in C.C.J.E.F. versus Rell, which was brought to ensure that all Connecticut students receive inadequate and equitable educational opportunities in the 1996 Jeff versus O'Neil case. The Connecticut Supreme Court ruled that students in the Hartford Public School had not been provided in substantially equal educational opportunities under the state constitution. The common theme in all of these cases is the inequity of equal access to good quality education with its heavy reliance on local property taxes. The property tax burden varies significantly throughout our 169 municipalities, and thus, the state has the responsibility to equalize the ability of municipalities to provide educate, equal opportunities for education. You know, we have been, uh, underfunded for years now. I think I heard Richie say nine. Uh, right now, with the, with our special ed, they're looking for the percentage here, but they have, they are, they are taking twenty percent of our budget for special ed, and there's 530 students, and our total students is two, 2,626. That's a big, you know, it's twenty-nine percent. I, I just, so we, we decided last month to advocate Board of Ed, right, describe our situation, which I think they did a very good job in this letter. We're endorsing this letter. Um, Mr. Logan and I believe Ms., Ms. Gentile have agreed to, uh, go to the state and represent this letter. City has agreed to provide transportation, and I'm sure some of us will, will go with them, uh, teachers and parents to go, and hopefully, Mr. Logan can get an opportunity and Ms. Gentile to read this at their meeting. Because this cannot, you know, I don't want to talk, I don't like talking like this, but this really can't be tolerated. Why is it that we have to foot the bill when it's their respons, when they, you know, they're legally obligated? They just lost the case, and they still want to continue to, you know, we have a $30 billion budget in the state of Connecticut, and we need to cut a billion out of it. So what does that mean? You know, we all know what that means. They're going to, we're going to have a percent.
Mr. Stowe, if I can ask you a question, Mr. Stowe?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's a, there's a acronym ECS, which means Education Cost Sharing, which is a formula from the state of Connecticut, okay? And we're supposed to get X amount of dollars. Have we been short-changed, getting less than a hundred percent on that?
Yes.
For quite a while. Is that correct, Mr. Stowe?
Yes. The last, the last time I was in, it was around two million, wasn't it?
Thirty percent short change.
Yeah.
You know, while other communities are getting over a hundred and fifty percent.
Right, exactly. While other communities are getting way past what this should be getting.
And we've already got the cut, which Richie talked about. That was the alliance, that, that eighty-three thousand change. I believe that was the alliance. So, I mean, we, we, as responsible stewards, under the mayor's oversight, need to try our best to put as much pressure on the state as we possibly can to try to help our citizens that live here. Our economic development has been working full, full out, trying to, to better our city with, uh, businesses which they've had success. We've had success, and we need that, we need that timeframe, uh, to get, have more success. But when we're put up, you know, I'm not the best English speaking person. Anyway, when we, the burden that they put upon us to try to balance our budget, you know, uh, it, it makes it almost impossible, you know, to do.
Charlie, the phrase is unfunded state mandates. That's what you're trying to say.
Well, I'm trying to put, I'm, I'm trying to put it in simple terms. You know, our citizens here are, are trying desperately to survive hand in mouth, you know, retirees. We have a lot of retirees, and, and they can't absorb this. You know, the state of Connecticut is obligated. They need to follow their own rules. They need to follow the court, that court case, uh, they, they need to abide by that court case decision.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Uh, so we need a motion to accept. We're, uh, motion by Mr. Janetti?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Castelitis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So it's in the public record, you're correct? Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, next we have a resignation, unfortunately, from Mr. Michael Holcason, if I said that right, Jared. Uh, the letter was addressed to Mr. David Blackwell Jr., alderman, uh, chairman of the Ansonia ARMS. Uh, "Dear David Blackwell Jr., please accept this as my official resignation as Assistant Chief, Volunteer EMS, and Commissioner of Ansonia Rescue Medical Services. As you may be aware, over the past several months, due to a change in my full-time job, I have been unable to attend commission meetings and have not been able to fulfill my duties as Assistant Chief, Volunteer EMS. It is with heavy heart that I resign my position and thank you and the commission for giving me the time to try and sort out this time conflict. I look forward to returning to volunteer status as soon as possible, and possible resuming my position as Assistant Chief, Volunteer EMS, when and if the opportunity presents itself in the future. Again, thank you for the opportunity." Jared, a few words?
Uh, yeah, Mike was, um, uh, came up through the ranks as an officer here and, uh, over as Assistant Chief. Uh, he has since taken, uh, taken a new job, a little fan buyout that he worked for, and, uh, his time is pretty much preoccupied with that. So, um, we tried to work it out with him. It wasn't working out. We came to the original business that he was wanting through time, and, uh, we've also, Ryan Hunt, and, uh, Spirit Place and, uh, the commission has Assistant Chief for, uh, the, uh...
Okay. Said, okay. I will entertain a motion for a, uh, letter, Mr. Marini, yeah, uh, letter thanking him for his service to the city of Ansonia. Uh, Mr. McCarroll?
I move, uh, I move that we accept the resignation and send him a letter, thank you for his service.
Awesome. And, uh, seconded by Mr. Delibro. Uh, thank you, sir. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, with that done, uh, we have some appointments from the mayor to Board of Apportionment and Taxation, Mr. Peter Danielczuk. I'll entertain a motion by Mr. McCarroll.
Yes, I move that we approve the appointment of Peter Danielczuk to, uh, the Board of Apportionment and Taxation.
Is there a second, please, Mr. Castelitis? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. As, uh, Jared mentioned, uh, ARMS, uh, Mr. Ryan Hunt, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Mr. Joe Janetti, and seconded by Mr. Castelitis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Fire Commissioners, uh, Mr. Joshua Stewart, Mr. Patrick Henry?
I make a motion to appoint Joshua Stewart to oversee Ansonia's bravest as a fire commissioner.
A lot of authority going to Sixth Ward there. Seconded by Mr. Delibro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. WPCA, Mr. Nunzio Parente. Okay, Mr. Janetti, and, uh, Mr. Anthony Cassetti. Thank you. Um, back to the fire commissioners. Uh, Mr. Josh Stewart, that was abstaining, correct?
Yes.
Get that abstained on the fire commissioner. All right. Uh, we did Nunzio. Also on WPCA, Mr. Ken Plavniky. I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Cassetti, seconded by Mr. Martin Dempsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, Mr. Andrew Garofto, Mr. Cassetti, and Mr. Castelitis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And Mr. Henry Bolanz. Uh, Mr. Joshua Stewart, seconded by Mr. Anthony Cassetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you all. Okay. Uh, Resolutions. We have a late resolution regarding the, uh, Ansonia Nature Center, uh, regarding compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. Sheila, would you like to tell us about it, or?
Oh, yes.
Nature Center?
Yes. This resolution is for, um, we just received a grant for fifteen thousand, approximately fifteen thousand. It's $14,960. For, um, what we're going to use it for is to address some of the ADA compliance issues at the nature center. There was a feasibility study done which pointed to some issues, uh, that the nature center itself and the playground have. And so this fifteen thou, approximately $15,000 will be used towards that. And this resolution just, is just authorizing the mayor to accept the, the funds, but it's, needs to be rolled into the, into the minutes.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions of the alderman for Sheila O'Malley, or any question? Is there a match on that, Sheila?
No match.
No match, so it's just straight, okay.
Very grant funds.
And do we want to accept it? I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Delibro?
Make, uh, motion to accept the resolution.
Okay.
It should be ready to the record.
Huh?
It should be ready to the record.
Okay, you are correct. Uh, does somebody have a copy of that? Somebody want to read it? Mr. McCarroll, sir?
Whereas pursuant to Public Act 16 dash two, section one, May special session, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the city of Ansonia, make an application to the state for $14,960 in order to undertake the Ansonia Nature Center ADA improvements and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the Ansonia Board of Aldermen that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Public Act 16 dash two, section one, May special session, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the city of Ansonia in the amount not to exceed $14,960 is hereby approved and that, and make a motion to allow the mayor to accept the grant funding.
Thank you. Is that a second by Mr. Delibro? You had your hand up before. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. Thank you all. Okay, uh, ordinance? Uh, no business for ordinance. Uh, new business? Does anybody have any new business? Uh, Mr. Stowe, please.
Uh, I forgot to, to give you some more information about the Board of Ed. Board of Ed meeting is two, our Tuesday is seventeenth, next Tuesday. There's a... There's a special ed professional that's going to be there talking about that program at the high school lecture hall, and they asked if Wally Alderman could please attend.
Is there a time on that, sir?
Seven, seven o'clock.
Seven PM, so even I can make it?
Seventeenth, next Tuesday.
Any other new business from any of the aldermen?
Lecture hall.
High school?
High school lecture hall.
All you hilltop guys can coast down the hill. Okay. Old business, or any old business from the alderman? Any old business? Any old business? I have one question just from the mayor's staff, the portables, that's going before the planning and zoning on the thirtieth, is it?
It's January thirtieth. It will be before planning and zoning.
Okay, all right, so, so this is kind of like near the deadline, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, just so you know, that's planning and zoning on January thirtieth, and they meet at seven o'clock?
Yep, and if we could talk offline.
Okay, all right, that's fine, okay.
May it six thirty.
Six thirty.
Oh, six thirty, thank you from whoever. Okay, Jared, thank you very much. Okay, so I know there's a few aldermen that'll be there because we have interest in that concern. Okay, if there's no other old business, I'll make.
Motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. Is there a second on that, please?